Okay, good evening to you all and welcome to the council's regular monthly work session. So tonight's agenda is somewhat different from what you're accustomed to seeing perhaps. And we have two basic items on our agenda and some discussion in between, I believe. So this point in time, welcome to all of you and welcome council. We will begin with the roll call, please. Ms. Knox.
Mayor Marshburn.
I'm present.
Mayor Proton Behringer. Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Vance.
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Okay, thank you, council. As has been noted, the agenda has two basic items along with the other traditional reports. So at this point, I will entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
Suck it.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposition, no, and it's so ordered. Okay, we will first of all recognize our, excuse me, our finance director, Mr. David Beck, for an investment advisors update. Welcome, Mr. Beck. We look forward to hearing from you, sir.
Thank you and good evening. Just wanted to take the opportunity tonight to kind of make you all aware of some changes that are occurring with our investment advisors, PFM. Just a little bit of background, the town entered an investment advisory services agreement with PFM in 2015, and PFM has served as the investment advisors for the town since that time. Our primary point of contact, I think, over that entire six years now has been Craig Robinson with PFM. We were notified a couple of weeks ago that PFM has entered into an agreement to be purchased by US Bank. It's just the asset management division of PFM that would be merged into US Bank's asset management program. We actually have a, an existing relationship with US Bank because the way our investments are set up, PFM acts as the advisors, but US Bank is the custodian for the, for the investments and the holdings. So we already have some familiarity with, with US Bank. I was on a conference call about a week or so ago with our current representatives with PFM, just to, they kind of brought me up to speed a little more than what the press release did on, on, you know, how the merger would, would go about and what it would look like after the merger. It's my understanding PFM will still sort of be a separate division within US Bank. During that same call, I was also notified unrelated to the merger that Craig Robinson is going to be leaving PFM. He, he was on the call and let me know that he had found a, a position with a different organization that required less travel. I think he's, he's had to travel up and down the east coast quite a bit to the PFM clients and has an opportunity to, to work and not travel so much and be closer to home. So he is taking that opportunity. So even if we were not dealing with this merger, we'd still be dealing with some changes with PFM. Our, our agreement with PFM does not allow those services to be assigned to anyone else without the town's consent. So US Bank has sent us a form that we would need to sign to move everything over to the, to the new entity and allow them to manage things going forward. So that was one thing I wanted to kind of get some feedback on this evening is to see, you know, what your thoughts were on going ahead and, and moving into a new agreement with this new company. Our services agreement does allow us to terminate the contract at any time with 30 days written notice, so we're not locking ourselves into any kind of long-term agreement. It's probably my preference to, to try the new organization and see how things go before we bid these services out, just because we are familiar with US Bank already. And I think we'll be dealing with some of the same people at PFM, even though it won't be Craig, I'm familiar with some of the other folks there as well. And I think they're going to be the ones that are going to be servicing our accounts, at least for the next little while. So that was one item I wanted to get some feedback on and just kind of see what council's thoughts were on how to move forward with those investment advisory services.
Okay, so we'll enter into a brief discussion here. Some of us here have been in office since that agreement was first reached. I believe Mr. Watkins was the town manager when, when that was first approved. And from my perspective, they've served us well. I'd, I would say almost, I don't know if I'd say, you know, on a personal, we've sort of watched Greg sort of grow up as a father. He, he became a father, I think, and during, during this time, and he would always give us a report on his, on his new children there. So it's been interesting to work with him. I think he's done a good job. But council, you heard Mr. Beck and his thoughts. I'll start with Mr. Singleton, if you have any comments or questions, sir.
I have no problem with the merger and associating with US Bank. Sure do. I think we've had good success with PFM. And if you can be working with some of the same folks, whether with them or with US Bank, sounds good to me.
Okay, and since Ms. Behringer has been on council since then, any questions, comments?
I'm fine with continuing with the US Bank with the merger. We will miss Craig. He had, he brought a little levity to it as well as making the reports and giving us updates, but things change. And so I'm fine with continuing with that.
Okay, and I'll go to Mr. Vance down there, who was part of this when he came on council.
Do I do not see an issue with the merger with US Bank?
Okay, Mr. Dellinger.
Yeah, I think it's probably a good time, since there's a lot of change, to reevaluate, sort of maybe potentially renegotiate some of the terms that are in there, either with this existing agreement or start a new agreement with them if we want to move forward. I think at this time we move forward, but I think what we've found is we've served ourselves well. When we reevaluate some of the older relationships and conditions that we have with some of our vendors, we often come back with better terms. It'd be interesting to see kind of what other municipalities, these are all public documents, what their cuts are and the percentages and things like that. It's probably a good time to look at our investment, reevaluate our investment strategy as well, too. It's a different economic and interest rate environment than it was in 2015. I think in the short term, it makes sense to continue with them, but I think it's a good opportunity to reevaluate all these things. And if we want to bid it out, bid it out if there are other better terms that we can come with, with another firm on the consulting side. It's always, it's usually a good idea to have two separate entities advising and managing your capital. They're more independent in their communications and in their advice to you. So I think for the short term, continuing is good. I think it's a good opportunity to reevaluate the terms of the agreement. That's, that's my opinion.
Mr. Matthews.
I have no problems with giving this group an opportunity, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I believe you've gotten a consensus from council at least to continue the current relationship and you'll be getting back in touch with us, I guess, after we have some experience with how this change affects our relationships and whether or not we want to bid it out.
Yeah, certainly do that. And then, you know, we'll try to get something scheduled fairly soon with some of the new folks with, or the, the replacement for Craig with PFM to get them here to, to meet everyone, whether it's virtually or in person. I did want to ask for some feedback on one additional item related to the investment services. Probably 30, 45 days ago, Craig let me know that PFM has set up a pooled investment fund for local governments. It's very similar to the North Carolina Capital Management Trust, but the PFM fund is going to, it's a little more diversified in the investments. North Carolina Capital Management Trust is really primarily related, invested in US government securities. And PFM will actually expand a little bit beyond that and invest in some commercial paper and things like that, which we have as part of our portfolio that they manage for the town right now. But this pooled investment is, is fairly new. I think it was set up with sort of seed money from Wake County and Buncombe County, and I think they have about 10 or so folks that have joined the, the pool now. Just as, as far as the little perspective on the, the return on investment, Capital Management Trust for the past probably six to eight months, the return has been 0.01%. I mean, the US government securities have really bottomed out as far as the, the return on those. Craig said currently the PFM pool is returning an investment of 0.1%, so, you know, nine basis points higher. Still not, not anything close to what we had prior to the pandemic, but it is a, a better return on our investment. That's something that we'd have to get council approval at some point to agree to, to use the pool as a new depository if we wanted to invest some of our funds with them. But I did want to get a little feedback on that and see if there was any appetite for looking at that as a potential investment option. And, you know, we could start out small. We don't have to put a lot of money into it. But I feel like it's pretty secure and with the rate environment like it is now, it's a better return than a lot of the options we have right now.
Is, is that something, David, that you possibly would say make inquiry of Buncombe County with other pool participants, just to get some feedback from those entities as well?
Yeah, yeah, I'll certainly reach out to some of those folks before we would, you know, put any money into that. Right now, it's probably, you know, more a matter of just deciding if the town wants to have that as an option and go ahead and get it improved, approved as a, an investment option. And then we can kind of weigh how much we want to put into that and, and go forward. But obviously, you know, I can talk to Emily Lucas with Wake County, you know, I know her fairly well, and I can find out who some of the other newer members are that have joined on since then as well. And, and, you know, I can talk to more than, more than one group of folks.
And I think everybody on council probably knows Buncombe County, Asheville, western part of the state up there. So Phil, I'll start with you. Any comments, questions?
Yeah, how long has this new group been together?
I want to say since around the beginning of the calendar year, so six months or so.
Okay. Craig?
Yeah, I had the trouble with that. I remember a few years ago, pre-pandemic, when Craig came and talked with us about getting involved in a higher percentage of commercial paper and so forth, and the investment was pretty strong. It's pretty, turned out well. So the advice he'd given us in the past has been solid advice, so I'd had no trouble with that.
Behringer.
I would agree with Mr. Singleton.
Mr. Dellinger.
So looking at our fiscal, our investment policy, do we already have the authority to invest in these local government pools, investment pools? It looks like we do under section eight, under portfolio diversification, or is that a different? Are we talking about something different? On page six, page six of the document 17 of the agenda. Are you asking for, I don't know if you need a policy change or are you asking to do a specific investment in a specific fund, which I don't think we need to approve? The second one from the bottom, under above repurchase agreements?
The, the local government investment pool?
Yeah.
I'm not 100% sure. That may refer to a specific fund that the state treasurer's office has set up. They have a local government investment pool as well. I don't think there's too many folks that participate in it, but I would need to probably go back and look at the history of the, the policy to see if that's sort of a general statement or a specific fund.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Vance.
I don't have an issue with what you're involved. Don't have an issue with it.
Okay. Okay, sure. Again, I believe you've heard from council, so we'll look to have a follow-up. And, and we do anticipate if we continue on with PFM, that their, their new representative will come down, we'll have a chance to meet and chat with that person some fairly soon.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll be in touch with them and try to schedule something.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Yep, I did one more comment. Under the section you mentioned, 13 successors and assigns, and it does require a council vote to, for us to continue forward with them, is that correct?
Yes.
So that would be part of this visit that they're doing to, before we vote on that, to, for them to pitch us, basically?
Yeah, I can, I can see if they could come. So the, the assignment agreement that I received by mail gives us 60 days to respond, and if we, a no response is deemed an approval. So I would need to see what their schedule looks like to see if we could get them here in a meeting within the next, you know, two months.
To ask the attorney, does that fly?
Yes, I mean, you can, they can structure it either way that, so they're, my understanding is how they've deemed it is that you have 60 days to say that you don't consent to the assignment. And if you're silent, that's deemed that you have consented to it. That's not usually the typical way that it will get phrased.
Okay.
It would typically require affirmative action.
Got you. I would just say if we're going, if there are parts of the agreement, if you review it, that need to be looked at, look at them and you come to us with recommendations with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that everything from council for Mr. Beck? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. If you talk to Mr. Robinson, please give him our good regards in his new position there.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two, sidewalk improvement prioritization, and I think you all have at your dais there some information relating to that. And I will recognize Ms. Gabby. Good to see you this evening.
Good to see you as well. Good evening, Mayor, members of the town council. So I just wanted to add that Jeff Trezenberg, the planning director, will just give a quick intro to this item, and then I'll, he'll hand it back over to me and I'll walk you through the, the sidewalk mapping tool. So I'll let Jeff take over from here.
Jeff?
Thanks, Gabby. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Yes, planning staff, primarily Gabby, has been spending some of her time over the last few months as we've tried to wrap our hands around what we have in terms of information about sidewalk projects, sidewalks that exist, and developing a visual aid tool that could help, could help you, could help planning commission, could help staff as we look to prioritize projects going forward. And so it's, it's taken a little bit of time because we've had a lot of stuff in, still in paper format, and then we've also had two sources of existing digital data to try and bring everything together as best we can. And so we know that you're prepping for your bond discussions, so if this can be of assistance in that process, we certainly welcome you all to, to use that as well. Like I say, we just needed a good tool and be able to get all this information in one place so that we can prep for additional work, if we get a grant to help us complete some of this information, or whatever the case may be. But just having a good tool for prioritizing when pots of money become available for sidewalk projects. We preliminarily, preliminarily showed this to the planning commission this month and gave them an opportunity to take a quick pass at things initially, and Gabby will be able to speak more to that after she gives you a little demonstration and some more information. So thank you very much, Gabby.
All right, thank you, Jeff, for queuing it up. So as Jeff mentioned, I've been working over the past few months to gather and compile any information that we have in the town for sidewalk projects that have been flagged either through transportation plans or through town council recommendations or staff recommendations. And so we wanted to make this tool available to town council and the town in general just to be able to have a database of, you know, all the sidewalk projects that are out there, and also to be able to develop a way that we can prioritize these improvements, not just for bond monies, but as other funding becomes available. So to walk you through the, the interactive map, and I believe you all have a link to this map, I'm not sure if anybody tried playing around with it and exploring it, but we just, we wanted to take tonight as an opportunity to walk you through it more than anything and to help you familiarize yourself with it. So let me pull up the legend here. So this lighter scovus yellow color represents existing sidewalks. So these are sidewalks that are already constructed. And then all the rest of the segments that you see are sidewalk projects that have yet to be constructed. And the colors don't signify anything, that's just so that you're able to differentiate the different segments from each other. In addition to having the different colors, there are, as you zoom in more, you'll see there's an arrow because there are sections, for example, on Benson Road where there are several segments, so B2A and B2B here. So these IDs, they, they reference back to that, that spreadsheet that has the, the list of all the sidewalk projects as well, which you should all have hard copies in front of you. And I believe the Excel spread workbook was also sent to each of you. And so you are also able to just click on those segments, and that will also pull up the information such as the, the length of the segment and any other corresponding information which is available to you in your table. And so as you noticed, as I zoom in, as you're closer in, the aerial pops up, and so we figured it would be easier to, to visualize the context. As you zoom further out, it's just the map view. I did want to point out one caveat, since we are working off of older GIS files, there have been instances that we've caught where there might be a recommended segment, and it's actually been constructed since then. So it just, you know, pointing out that we're still in the process of cleaning this up, and this is meant to be kind of a living tool that gets updated as time goes. So if you, in your review, if you do happen to find any that are already constructed, please feel free to let me know, flag that, and I can update the map. One planning commission member actually noted that along Rand Road, but just wanted to point that out, that it's not a perfect or finalized tool. It's something that is going to consist, is constantly be updated over time. But the, the goal is to have this tool work in our favor and to, you know, help prioritize these projects going forward. Let me think of anything else that, and if you have any, any questions as I'm walking through this, feel free to interrupt, that's fine. It's kind of what we did with, with planning commission, we just meant to have tonight be the introduction to the tool. And so then we're not expecting you to walk away from tonight and to go through this list of 85 projects and to, you know, number them each, one through 85. The main goal was just, what we told planning commission was just to have, have you take a first stab at it, mostly based on gut instinct and also if you want to take into consideration the criteria that, that staff has compiled thus far. But we're just trying to divide this list into three different tiers. So, and, and the tiers are, are not meant to be an exact timeframe, it's more to establish a goal. So tier one would be more immediate term, so within the next five years roughly. Tier two would be five to 10, and so forth. And again, that's not meant to be exact, it's just to, to help prioritize these projects and to help start chipping away at them. So that, that was what we asked planning commission to do, and they took their first stab at that. The other thing that we asked them to do was to review the evaluation criteria that staff put together and either to provide feedback on, on that criteria regarding what they thought might be of higher importance, and also if they wanted to suggest any additional criteria. Because again, this is an ongoing process, and the whole point of this is to gather feedback from planning commission and town council. And so we have received that feedback from planning commission, and I will follow up with a memo to you all, just kind of providing the, the input that they provided to staff for the criteria and the projects that they most consistently all ranked within the tier one category. And... So again, we don't need to have, we don't, we don't have an exact timeframe for when we expect you all to provide this input. This was just staff trying to help town council to maybe identify, you know, 10, 15 or so projects that you might want to prioritize going into the bond referendum. If there happens to be a handful that everybody is in agreement for, that could be used potentially for the bond referendum materials, but that's, that doesn't necessarily need to happen. More than anything, we just wanted to make town council aware of this tool, and if that is helpful in preparing for the bond referendum, then that's even better. But at this point, if there aren't any questions for me, I was going to pass it off to, to John and Rodney in case they, they want to add anything else about how this might tie into the, the bond referendum.
I have a question in reference to what you said. So there isn't a timeline where this would be able to be used accurately?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
There is not a timeline for when this will be the, able to be used accurately.
Yeah, I think she was just trying to say she, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that we weren't trying to rush council and to give us feedback, so we want to make sure you feel like you have adequate time to analyze this information, compare it to what you know out on the street, out as you go out about town, you know, there are some segments that's missing, some that you, you know, thought about should be done. And we just haven't put a deadline on when we want the info back, but of course, sooner the better, but we don't want you to feel like you're rushed.
The tool can be used now.
Can be used now.
There'd be minor tweaks, as Gabby said, a section here that we missed taking off because it's been built, or you may identify something that we ought to have on the list, you know, we can always add those.
But the tool was interactive and ready for you to use.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
As you do, as you'd like to.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, we'll go around before you step aside, and Ms. Berry.
I'm looking at item V1, it says Benson Road East and says from Thompson Road to Circle Drive. Is that a mistake? Thompson Road?
Should be Lake Drive. Would it not be?
Could be what?
We're looking on the sheet now.
To Circle Drive from Lake Drive to, that's part of the bridge replacement.
Okay, that's...
Yeah.
Okay.
Lake Drive to Bell Circle.
Circle Drive is...
That's all.
Okay. Other comments or questions from Ms. Lawler's presentation from council? Phil, you have anything?
Go ahead. Thank you, John, I got one too.
Okay.
Go ahead.
In our documents, the system is a set, but it was referenced, you know, the Campo tier system, and ours is a little different that you created. Would it make sense just to match those so that they're the same? Because I think yours was like, it was like five to seven, tier one, eight to 15 for tier two, and the Campo's like zero to five, five to 10. Is there any, would it make sense just to use their tiering timeline system to be...
I mean, even that can be...
It's not perfect.
Even that can be modified, because as I say, it's not meant to be exact, it's just to somewhat, you know, tend to organize it.
I think just for, if people are used to that tiering system on the roadside, it makes sense just to keep it consistent, knowing they're both imperfect. First of all, this is amazing amount of work here. This is some of the best, most detailed stuff I've seen since I was sat up here.
Thank you.
It's a great start. It's clear there's a lot of work when you do this. I have some quick questions. Is the, I didn't get a chance to dive into the spreadsheet, is the data in the spreadsheet linked to the GIS? So, when you map it on the GIS, it automatically calculates those links?
Yes.
That's great. One thing, again, I didn't get a chance to get into the spreadsheet, one column that might be very helpful is a cost per square foot, per foot column that then multiplies by that, and it can be a low and a high, but it gives us just an idea and a range of how much it costs to do some of these segments, knowing that that's again, variable, but then when you start to bundle these sections together, you get an idea of doing these over here, it helps us spread the money around if we need to. That's something I think would be helpful, especially with the dollars we're working with. The other is, did you look at all at the proposed greenways and integrate these or classify them as, this is a sidewalk, this will be a greenway, this could be both, because I think it'd be very helpful to know which of these could potentially be greenways, since we have different pots of money for that in the bond. Is that distinction, where the greenway has consulted as well at this point?
At this point, it's mostly sidewalks, I think there were a couple in here that were potentially trails, but this is mostly strictly sidewalks for now. That would be...
I think that'd be side paths, I guess.
Yeah, I think that'd be really helpful, because the bond has money for both, and so we know this can only be used sidewalk money, this could use, so that would be a good column of, you know, just helping us do some of that work. Last thing is, I think the next step for some of this, it's happened already up here, is eyeball verification over time of, you know, I get the old maps and all that, but it's, this is, it's a great start though.
Yeah. And I just wanted to follow up on your comment about the cost, so there were, since most of these were drawn from the transportation plans, there were very rough cost estimates that were produced through that. I should say that the cost estimates were initially put together through the 2010, and then they were updated in the 2018. However, and we were considering adding that to the spreadsheet, but the one thing I do want to add is that to get a more accurate cost estimate, factoring in things like if there's missing right-of-way or if there's environmental features, things like that, that would take a substantial amount of time. So, we decided not to include it for now, because I just, in case that wasn't entirely accurate, I didn't want that information to be misleading and for somebody to hook onto a number and think that that was, you know, 100% accurate.
Yeah, that's why I think you're in a low range and a high, and it can, it might be off by a magnitude of two or three, but it gives you the relative cost of everything. And I think the important part about, there are going to be some challenges with some of them, with right-of-way and extra costs, I think we'll have to find a way to flag that if it's a known, but...
And I would just add on to this conversation too, one challenge we ran into with the 2013 bonds is we started using those just per linear foot kind of estimates, then those got out into the public, and then we somewhat committed to building everything that we put a price on. In many cases, they were doubled, those estimates, and so, we ended up getting sort of burned, inadvertently by trying to provide more information, we didn't do, we don't think the citizens are a good service to give their expectations up. So, I think a hybrid of that could be, once council gives us the top two, three projects that everyone's got consensus on, we could move those to pre-design and start honing in on the exact cost before you commit to too many things further down the road. And that's a step we didn't get to do for the 13 bonds, that I think those on the council that went through that have agreed that this time they want us to, and the reason you set aside some pre-development money was to get some of those professional estimates before we get too far out in committing the total dollars we had. So, completely hear what you're saying, just lesson learned in trying to balance those two.
We recognize Mr. Singleton, I believe.
Yes. Gabby, on the plan here, if you have some existing sidewalks, there's gaps in between it, can you go to Curtis Drive off the Vandor Springs, Vandor Springs? You need to go across 70. Let's see, right here, Vandor Springs Place to Curtis Drive, yes, right there. Vandor Springs Place has, and of course, it's, you know, recently built, has sidewalks on both sides of the road, all the way until it gets to the end of its project life. Yeah, thank you. And keep going down to where the sidewalk's, other way, other way, going toward Western Ridge, so they stop there, where there's no sidewalk here, I suggested that because Western Ridge was approved back in the 90s, and there's just a sidewalk on one side of the, they rode, there's not even a sidewalk on Western Ridge coming out over here, and you've got two sidewalks stubbed out here. So, I just wanted to see where that showed up on here, where they stubbed, where there's missing pieces, because that's one of many around town where we have missing pieces, but you plugged in what is at least on the report here of a way to try to connect. And again, in older neighborhoods like this, it isn't that old, but it was built in the late 90s, it was just one sidewalk on one side of the road, and you see the other side of Western Ridge didn't even have a sidewalk on either side of the road. So, it's, it's just the way things, that's the way our development rules were done back then, it's just not as, you know, we just don't have the sidewalks that we have, or require development to build the sidewalks that we have now. So, I think, of course, in our old neighborhood, two of our oldest neighborhoods, Greenbrier and Cloverdale don't have any, so I think that's on the plan, so I just wanted to see that, thank you, that's very helpful. When you went into that and gave us the, how did you, when you went from the plan, when you zoom in, it does that?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. Once you zoom in close enough, it'll switch to the aerial so that you're able to see, and the aerials are fairly recent, so I mean, for example, here you have existing sidewalk, and we don't have that mapped yet, so that's something else that I'll have to add on to there.
Okay.
Gabby, it's worth noting that the aerials get updated for different parts of town at different times, so you could have one quadrant of town that has stuff built very recently, you could have another aerial that stuff was built five years before that that is not on your aerial, so that's another, that's another gotcha that you may sort of see when you're looking at this, you may wonder why are we not showing one somewhere, but there may actually be one there that's just not on the aerial. And Gabby's tried to compensate for that by drawing the school bus yellow lines, so we think, for the most part, the school bus yellow lines fill in where an aerial may not have the sidewalk.
Okay. And as you zoom in on that again, Gabby, you had the red dotted line there on Curtis, that's where the sidewalk, that's...
Here?
Yeah, that's where, is that where our sidewalk, is this where you have that red dotted line right there?
Yeah, and that's actually not a layer that I added in there, that's just part of the base map.
Okay.
But, yeah, those seem to be...
All right, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Matthews, anything?
Just gotta dig into it now.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else? Mr. Vance, did I get you?
I've already spoken.
Okay. And I believe you said Jeff was gonna follow you in this, or, excuse me, John?
Well, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna, in case John or Rodney wanted to add any considerations regarding the bond.
Would you zoom into an area where there's existing sidewalk on one side, whether it's on the aerial or yellow, and that we're proposing one on the, there's a line on the other side, so maybe Vandora Springs near the school, well, north of the school? So, one thing just to keep in mind as you're looking at this, one of the things that staff has included is sidewalks on a second side of a street or a road, if the road classification for that type road would have a sidewalk on both sides. So, that's gonna, that's when some of the nuances of prioritization come down. Yes, we'd like to have both on Vandora Springs Road, but at some point, council may say it's more important to have one on one side of some other major road that has none than a second one on Vandora. So, just keep in mind that some of the lines there have been added, because it may or may not be on a transportation plan, but if that road is prescribed to have them on both sides, that's been added as well. So, just didn't want that to be confusing, but that's sort of, like I said, that's one of the nuances when evaluation criteria, prioritization criteria, really comes into the, how are we gonna really get down to the best place to make connections? And right now, you've got a connection on one side, so do you not focus on the other side, but yet we might choose to enhance crosswalks that get you from one side to the other to be able to use the sidewalk better? And then, the only other thing I was gonna add is that while Gabby said there's no hurry to do this, and there certainly is not, the one thing that we just wanted to let staff, council know, we're working on the education materials for the bond, and you'll see a draft of that pretty soon. Right now, we're just talking about the total amount of dollars for sidewalks, we're not getting any specific projects. I just mentioned, as I was responding to Mr. Dellinger, we sort of got in our own trap last time of listing too many specific projects, possibly more than we could afford to do once we got the prices in, and so council has heard us ask for some leeway to not be too specific at a certain point in time so that we can go and apply where there's matching funding. But we do just want to make sure you know that if there are particular sidewalks that council feels is important to include in the bond education materials, and there's consensus from council, at any point there is that, we can start including it in the educational materials. That's the only time sensitivity right now. Beyond that, as Gabby mentioned, tier one, we will likely end up with many more in tier one than we will build with this bond, so even getting through the entire tier one is not critical in the near future. And then, we have reapplied for the DOT Bike and Pedestrian Planning Grant that we applied for last year and were not successful, we've applied for that again, and should we be awarded that, then that grant would also help take some of this work and take it to another level of study, and then we could incorporate that work in. So, a lot of timestamps in there, none of which are hard and fast, but I did just want to mention that anything that council had consensus on and wanted to see in education materials, we can include that anytime.
Okay, thank you, John.
Give me a question about the tiers, so we're talking actually more of a prioritization tiers than temporal tiers.
And what tiers?
Because if we're doing this prioritization criteria, and you're imagining to plug those in for each sidewalk, and it gets a point for this and a point for that and an induction for that, it's gonna create your tier, but you'd have to have a separate scheme for time prioritization, based on how much money is there. I mean, everything's tier one if you got a billion dollars, you know? So, the tier system is a little different than, well...
Right, so it's, the tier system is kind of the first level of prioritizing and kind of dividing it into three different buckets, and then the prioritization criteria will be used to be able to prioritize within those three tiers, if that makes sense.
I think we gotta create a list of the top choices and then figure out with the available funds, you know, whether we want to do the two most expensive ones, or do we want to do six moderate-priced ones or whatever?
We shouldn't be talking about time at all, because we've got to determine what the priorities are, what the available funds are, and then that determines what the timeframe for those is. So, just want to clarify, the prioritization's gonna create this tier structure of highest priority, and then we'll look at money, and then we'll figure out if we can do them at all, because there's some that...
And including them in the bond creates some of our time pressure that we've got to get done in the circle.
No doubt.
And the way the staff at Institute of Planning Commission is part of the reason for including this tier and the prioritization is partially to reference the historic nature of some of our plans, went with short, medium, and long range, and that's as specific as they went. Also, we have folks that, maybe Planning Commission level or even citizens who are going to give you input, that may want to only get at this at a high level, like short, medium, distant, or one, two, and three. And so, I think what Gabby's trying to do and Jeff is trying to do is create a sort of a two-part system so that feedback can be garnished at a very basic level, one, two, or three, and then also overlay prioritization. So, is that fair, Gabby, that you're sort of trying to hybridize them together depending on how the feedback is received?
That's what I want to, I want to kind of avoid people getting a timing expectation related to when they're gonna come. So, if we can remove the time for now from the tiering at all, we won't have to field those questions about when it's coming.
Absolutely.
We can say this is a top priority based on funding, we'll get to it. So, if we can figure out a way to get rid of the timing piece, that'll be helpful.
No, yeah, I agree, because that's why I keep stressing when I say with these tiers, those years, like that timeframe that I give is not exact, so I mean, you're right, we could just say short, medium, or long, or we could just avoid it altogether and say there is no scheduled date when this is gonna be complete, this is just how we're organizing them in terms of priority, and then as funding becomes available, we can start completing them.
I think that's, I think that's good, because people ask, they're gonna ask when, when is it gonna be done, and we all have an answer for that.
Well, I was gonna say, I mean, that's kind of a sensitive area, I think, and as we move into the bond thing, you know, invariably constituents, you know, say, okay, if we approve this bond, when are you gonna build sidewalks on my street? Or so, in some ways, obviously, that's an element that lurks there. I agree with you about prioritization, but in some ways, it seems to me you sort of get to marry the two together, maybe not in such an explicit way that you're, you know, you're giving false hopes, but it's still a fairly important element in the minds of most of our citizens anyway, I think.
Let me sum this up here, from past experiences, they're making this way too hard. Just for the next few months, pick a list of eight to 10 sidewalks, we'll get together, see what mesh, and prioritize them. And that's what you'll focus on in this bond, next bond referendum, maybe be able to do four of them, maybe do eight of them, maybe do nine and a half, that's all you need to focus on right now. We don't need to worry about tiers, this, that, and the other, we'll get to all that. But right now, we need to focus on six to 10 sidewalks, and then we decide where the priorities are. When people ask them, are they built, say, we've got eight years roughly to build, oh, and we could have 10, but about eight years, I mean, it's 2021, and we're past our eight years when they got approved in March in 13, so, and say it's gonna be built sometime in that timeframe. I think we all probably have ideas of ones we'd like to have a priority, you know, the Phil Matthews sidewalk, that's, I know his number one priority is, I don't even have to ask him, that's priority one, two, and three with him, he skipped the rest of them.
That's the most costly one.
But it's got a little bit of greenway elements, you know, we can already work out, but anyway, I think that's who you need to focus on, pick six to 10, then put them down, and then we'll get together and prioritize them. And some are gonna be big, and some are gonna be small, and there's usually four or five or a handful of small ones like Patch and Curtis Drive, but I mean, little ones, you can always add those if you have money, that's if you have money. Yeah, we didn't get burned last time with the cost estimates, not only was it the actual construction cost, but we had some sidewalks with utility issues that were nightmares, and we gotta face it's gonna happen this year, because when you're trying to retrofit sidewalks in the old neighborhoods, in Cloverdale, in the Western Road, in Greenbrier, or old neighborhoods, God knows, Avery Street, God knows what's on these roads on time, you know, what you think there, what's there, it's two different things, so we just have to realize that the cost could be more expensive in retrofitting, because most of these is what we're doing, is retrofitting onto old roads, oh, excuse me, in older neighborhoods.
And another situation we had come up for the benefit of those, to remind, and also for those that weren't a part of last time, another situation we did have come up with was that after the bonds were approved and we were working from a list that had been in a plan for a very long time... and, and we were working from a list that had been in a plan for a very long time, we had a number of residents along those projects who were, were adamantly opposed to it. So another, another, uh, task that council and staff will bear together is, when you do get the, a, a list of priorities, you know, we will help prepare you, but we'll all have to help continually educate the residents in the area. Because we actually pulled back and council chose to shorten a project just because the amount of citizens who, who did not want it. But yet, on paper, it made perfect sense, it made perfect connections, there was reasons, many reasons to do it. So we recognize that as an opportunity missed last time for continual education even after the bond's passed. So we have that on our radar to try to help do whatever we need to do to help council answer citizens along with, with staff.
That's a good point.
Many people, you know, we put the one on, uh, on, uh, Bruce Mont, no, Claymore, I'm sorry. And I mean, most people, they were receptive, there was no issue. But we put, we did the one, uh, off of Forest Ridge Road, off of, uh, Foxwood for the school. Most of those people were great. Bill Anderson, I mean, he was saying they never had one so easy, because people wanted to get the kids out the street. But, uh, you know, when you go to someplace like Greenbrier, which has been there a long time, and you go down Winter Locken, you gotta pick a side. And some people aren't gonna like it in their front yard, it's just the way it is. And that's one of those discussions we have to have with their, you know, when you have a meeting with their, uh, uh, homeowners association and try to get feedback from them. But I mean, if they're gonna want, if they're gonna want sidewalks, you gotta put them on one side or the other. And we can't put it in the middle of the street.
They gotta go along somebody's front yard.
Yes, sir. It does, it does happen that way. But after you get them in, most people don't complain, as long as the sidewalks are maintained and so forth, you don't get. I mean, we've had people complain before and after it's in, they say, well, it's probably a pretty good thing to do.
Mayor, one last comment I wanted to make, if you, if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
I do want to thank staff, because it, it has been a lot of work. I wanna thank them for doing the work, but also in starting to use tools that we've not been using before. So just so you're aware, this interactive-type map using this GIS tool is the type of things that we'll be migrating towards for doing lots of things, like development maps, that we've, instead of printing you a hard copy, it'll be there, like bond project update maps. So you saw Gabby click on one of those, and a box popped up with the details. So this is the type of interactive mapping that we will start integrating into lots of the things that we're doing now. Um, one of the positions you approved in the last budget was a GIS-specific, um, uh, person that can help do all this. Gabby's done this this time, but, you know, Gabby could also, with a, with another resource onboard, Gabby can be compiling the data and looking at the test technical aspects, while someone with GIS, um, additional GIS time could be putting it into this thing. So just know that this, this will be the first of many times that you'll see this type map, and it's how we plan to communicate, um, especially all the bond projects going forward, but then other mapping that we do and provide to you and to citizens on a regular basis.
Thank you, John.
And Gabby, with this, uh, that, I mean, you have the link here in, in our agenda, which we all went to. But, uh, uh, from, besides that, where will, where will the link, will it be, just go, be on the, on the, uh, in the planning department on the, on the webpage, or you can put it somewhere?
Um, so it's, it's publicly accessible right now. Um, I, I think we might have passed this on to Rick, because I know after the planning commission, there were a few residents that were asking about it. Um, that's something we could link up on the, we could look at linking that up on the transportation, uh, page on the website through the town. So it's probably accessible.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you very much, and we may not be through you. Uh, Mr. Manager, any thing else?
No, I think a lot's been said. I mean, this, this the first phase of, you know, we know there's a lot of, more need than there is money, so this is the first phase of identifying some of the top areas where we can, um, put some sidewalks. There are some gaps, and there's some older neighborhoods, and, um, we just gotta kind of get them all together on the list and figure out what we can do.
Yeah, there's one thing this, these maps do, it, uh, yeah, kinda helps you understand, uh, you know, how much of our town still needs sidewalks, I guess. And as we continue to grow, obviously, I guess with our, um, UDO and development plans, those will be built.
Just remember, because I was here when we built the first sidewalk in the 90s, we extended a section on Vandoor Springs, and it was a 3-2 vote, and then it got built, because it was, it went from Vandoor Avenue and looped up to here, and people loved it. And then we adopted the first national fund in 1999, we only been doing this 22 years, so we are way behind, yes.
Yep.
And we, we can put all the bond money to sidewalks and not have enough money, um, yeah, around everything on the plan, so, yes.
Yeah, well, we gotta build out a few parks and other things too, so.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
And some of the sidewalks should go to parks.
Yep, you're right.
It's a lot of ground to cover. I mean, I, I will add that part of the reason we wanted to make this available through an interactive map is that, the hope is that you can kind of see how the existing sidewalks connect the proposed ones and how that begins to form a network. And, you know, hopefully, that can also be factored in, because like you said, there's endless amount of sidewalks to be added, but, uh, you know, that's where your priorities begin coming in, is first develop that, that, uh, that network of sidewalks and go from there.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, council, anything else, or we'll wrap this up? Mr. Trezenberg, any, any final comments from you, sir?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, I think, uh, the only thing I was gonna mention was, uh, kind of what John had alluded to, uh, in that we definitely hope to be doing more of this going forward, and with that GIS position that you all authorized for this year, hopefully, that's gonna help us go a long way towards achieving some of this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. All right, um, we'll, uh, move beyond that, and we are now, um, I believe that's all of our presentations, there, Mr. Manager. Uh, well, under formal presentations, we now get to manager reports.
Yes, um, you have, in the back of your agenda packet, um, kind of the, the meeting update, uh, what's coming. A couple of things, um, well, one, one thing in particular I wanted to talk about is the, um, American Rescue Plan, uh, discussion. Um, we plan to bring that to you fairly soon. Um, and we're looking at August 31st, there is some pretty heavy stuff there, especially with the joint Planning Commission meeting and getting deep into the UDO. So it's possible that we would, um, defer that till the September work session. Uh, if there is a need to have it on August, we would need to move a couple of things. Um, you know, we, we still have time. Uh, one bit of good news I will share with you today is I did sign the, uh, agreement to accept the funds today. Um, surprisingly, we were expecting about 9.1 million, and we actually ended up getting, um, a little over 10 million. So, um, we are still looking at the guidelines, um, they're still being refined. We're looking at different sources of information, um, kind of looking at, uh, what the categories are and, uh, what things we might have to fit into the, the categories. Um, there's gonna be some things in there that, you know, we do, um, on a regular basis that we would use the money for, and then there's gonna be some areas that we, we may venture into that is not part of our normal everyday, you know, work plan, um, whi- which is fine. Um, affordable housing, um, uh, business recovery, um.
Human services.
Human services, so just some broad categories that we don't get into, but, you know, these categories are put together for all governments, so there are some that get into them. But it will allow us to do some things that, if we want to, and the council desires to, to get into, that's not a normal thing for us.
It may be a minor point, but the, actually, the, the full amount is split, uh, with half now, and then was the other half, is it six months or 12 months, uh, comes later?
Yeah, uh, at least a year from now. We, we'll get half soon, uh, about 5 million, and, um, we have until, um, 2024 to obligate the funds, and we have until 2026 to actually complete the projects.
Right.
So, um, so we, we do have some time, depending on, you know, what we use the funds for. Um, so we will bring some ideas, um, to you and, um, some things you can be thinking about also. Um, but it's just a matter of getting it on the schedule. And so I, you know, I just wanted to kind of get some dialogue about whether September work session is, is that agreeable to you?
September work session, or you started August, now we're in September, I'm just asking. You mentioned, you mentioned August, that was.
I'll say August, we have a few things that we would have to move.
Yeah.
You know, there's gonna be that joint planning session on the UDA, UDO with the Planning Commission, and so that could make for kind of a lengthy, long kind of meeting.
I mean, is there something? For one, maybe on that work session, and we're gonna be meeting jointly, maybe we need to start that meeting at 5 o'clock instead of 6 o'clock. There's something to think about. And if there's one of these items on the work session, if, I mean, if we can't do it in August, I understand, but if you got a work session in August, and looking at the second meeting in August, you've only got two public hearings, and nothing, you know, consent, and then two public hearings, you can move one of these, that may not ha- take so much time. But I'm just thinking that out, but I, you know, whatever the agendas may be in September, I don't know how fast we need to act on this. And then right now, we don't need to say, okay, that's fine, September work session's fine.
The sooner we can start talking about it, the longer we can think about it. So I think even just getting a first pass on what you know to date, on what the acceptable uses are, what some of the thoughts around that are, we can start thinking and, and talking to our constituents and informing them. If, you know, if they approach us, we need to know. I mean, I mean, I've read some stuff, but it's, it's changed since I read something back in the March.
Oh, yeah, it's changed, yep.
So I think it'd be helpful to have that presented to us, what the current status is. It's a lot of, there are other, it's, it's a lot of money, and it's gonna require some other monitoring and party positions, and it, there's a lot of, it's a lot. So I, I think it's better to talk about it, uh.
Kim, but we need to remember, we got a bond referendum coming, and people are gonna ask, why don't you spend that on the bond referendum? When you can't spend on the bond referendum, so you don't wanna confuse the two, because you got two separate pots, one much bigger than the other. Um, so we have to be careful in talking about it and getting the parameters set. But we need to focus on the bond referendum, uh, as much as possible. Once staff gets together, and we can, uh, determine presentations to civic groups and so forth and so on.
For example, we just talked about this sidewalk list, but I think what we've seen so far, you can't just use it for.
Sidewalks or roads or anything like that?
You can't use it for any of that.
Or economic development, at, some economic development activity you can't use it for, so no utility extensions for growth,
but utility extensions where there's not currently service to serve existing citizens, and that's a big misnomer that's out there, because people are already asking us, when are you gonna extend a water line here? And when are you gonna extend sewer there, but that's not allowable under these, you know, this type of use.
No, no, maybe utility extensions for growth, but utility work for.
If, if, if there are residents served by the system that don't have adequate, or in the vicinity, that don't have adequate water supply. So failing wells, um, contaminated drinking wells, you know, in the, in the area. Yeah.
There's, but not economic development.
It has, it has to improve the, the life and welfare of people that already are in the area where the money's being given, not to build something for someone who might move to the, to there. Yeah.
I have a question on the, the allocation and use, those are staggered as well. So the first batch is 2024, allocation 2026, expended, and then the next one is 2025, 2027.
The first allocation we'll get probably in a few weeks, it's gonna be a wire transfer. The next one will be a year after we get the first one, at least a year, so it should be next year at this time.
It's all got to be expended and used by 26. There's not a, it's not like the half born, and then you start with the other, as I understand.
It all has to be obligated by, I think, December 2024, obligated, but you have to finish the projects by December 26.
For all of it, yes, all of it, yes.
Yeah, well, that, that sounds good. If all these towns have got all these projects, you don't have so many contractors, is that 2026 deadline when, I mean, uh, extend that? That just, when you're, uh, I think of White County, got 12 municipalities and the county, and the ones around, towns around us, and everyone's can try to do a summer-type pro- project.
And that's another, um, thing, the county's getting funds too, so.
How they use theirs could affect some of the things we're doing, so.
Well, it's all the reason to get, to not wait, is so we can get in line if there's something they need to do. And if it requires contractors that are gonna be spars, we don't wanna be sitting around, you know, not being able to get our projects bid or, you know, finished.
And when you, of these type projects, when you bid, is this the same bidding process that we currently use? What you have to go through, that the type bidding process for any type of project?
Existing.
Yeah.
With, with more reporting, though. And, and for most federally funded projects, there's even a, another level of, of requirements on the bidding than we are typically ever following, on only a handful of things, many of those have been waived. But in every use category, um, some of the use categories simply refer you to existing guidance for existing federal funds. So then there's, we still have to dissect if a project meets that federal funding's, uh, uh, approval or guidance, is certain elements of the federal bidding process waived, are all of them waived or only certain ones? And so that's where this complexity of us still dissecting all this guidance is.
Or a specialized attorney to help us do, if it's stuff we're not used to doing, especially on the front end, and there's large amounts of federal money we're doing with the bond, it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so, because, I mean, we've done federal sidewalk projects, federal money for roads and stuff, so I don't know if we need it.
But the reporting requirements are probably not as extensive.
For, for, for non-entitled communities, the reporting requirements now are not very stringent, so far, so there's, yeah. There's some, it depends on where, where you want to go, because some things you could spend these dollars on, you have to, there's a burden of proof of showing the effects that the people you're serving with it had. Some categories don't have that same burden. So I think another way to answer it, Mr. Dellinger, it might be after a first pass at categories council is interested in pursuing, then looking for some more specialized guidance within the buckets rather than broad, because there's lots of folks right now that want to sell you broad services, and they're reading the same documents we are. And so I think one way to do it is get that broad narrowed down a little bit, and then look for subject matter as needed.
That makes sense.
Okay, um, anything else, Mr. Manager?
So we'll, we'll take a look at the, um, the schedule and see, you know, if there's something we can move around October, not October, August 31st. Um, if not, or if, if we start earlier, whatever, but we'll take a look at the schedule and come up with something. Run it by you.
Okay, um, one other report, uh, that would not have been noted here, but I wanted to recognize, uh, Mr. Vance and his committee, I believe he's got a update, uh, from the HR, um, committee.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. We have a recommendation for reappointments of, uh, two individuals for the planning commission, uh, Mr. John Blasco and Bing Mao, excuse the pronunciation, for the planning commission, they're currently on the planning commission, and, uh, Mr. John Biglari to the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. These are all reappointments.
Okay, and I believe you make that in the form of a motion to the council for approval of these, uh, of these recommendations. So, um, I count that, the motion, is there a second to that by council? Okay, properly stated by Mr. Dellinger. So, uh, unless you have any questions, uh, of the committee, um, I'll ask for your vote, any. So, um, if you favor the, uh, recommendation that these three folks be appointed to the committees as described by Mr. Vance, would you vote aye?
Aye.
And not opposition no, and there is none, so. Does, does, does that pretty much wrap up, uh, your committee now? I know you've been working for a while.
No, sir.
Okay, all right.
Still grinding, still.
All right, okay, thank you, thank you. It's been a, a busy time, and I want to thank you both for your, for the time and efforts you've expended there, sure enough. We'll look to hear from you again. Okay, all right, uh, council, uh, reports from council, and so we'll do a round the horn here. I'll start with, uh, Mr. Matthews.
Uh, just one item, uh, and I think I'd share this with everybody, Mr. Vance and I had the opportunity to, uh, meet and be a part of the homecoming for the Well-deserved Veterans Home, and, and, uh, we're gonna present that plaque to council uh, on our first Monday meeting. We've coordinated with staff, and we're gonna have a, a short, brief video presentation, what actually went on out there, then present that award, so we're gonna schedule it for the first of our Monday meeting, uh, next month, sir. So I think you'll like what you see, and it was our pleasure to be there.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, uh, Mr. Ger- uh, Singleton?
Yes, uh, and we appreciate y'all going there. We saw the link, uh, Rick sent us the link to the World News, the ABC story, that was a very good story, sure was. I want to mention and thank the work that, uh, Doug Griner does and enforcement and so forth. You know, this type of year, you got tall grass and overgrown this and overgrown that, and I sent in five locations Sunday and emailed me back, and one was already, uh, one's already in some kind of, yeah, he's already filed, uh, I'll think of the suit. Um, it's, you know, she, we've been in the backyard for years. Anyway, he was on top of it, knew two of them, two more he was gonna, gonna work on, so they're on, they're on top of that. And other people reported them in, but I appreciate the work they do, because that's kind of thankless work, uh, to do. Uh, you know, it's challenging at times, so I appreciate the work that they do. do in, uh, enforcement. That's all I have.
Yeah, they don't usually like to see him coming.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Behringer?
Uh, yes, sir. A few things. I wanted to thank Public Works for fixing the broken sidewalk sections on East, West, East Garner Road and also Avery Street. I was walking this morning and, and looked down and realized I didn't have to dodge anything. And, um, so really appreciate their work getting that done. It's been, it's been needed for a while and it's good work. Uh, question about the church at Vandora, at Vandora Avenue and Vandora Springs Road, uh, St. Christopher's Church where the grass is so tall. Is that church, is that empty now, the facility? It doesn't look occupied, but the grass is really tall all around the, the property, um, even on the side, I weren't right away. Okay. Yeah, it's really, really tall.
Where the community, where the community garden was?
I'm sorry?
Where the community garden was, that's about the
It's near the community garden.
It's also the church's primary, the, the primary hall and the garden space.
Okay, yes, in pretty bad shape. Um, and let's see, there is a, I'm not sure whether it's a pothole or, or what happened, but if you are headed north on New Rand Road and cross the railroad track, uh, to make a left turn onto West Garner Road, there is a dip or a hole or something that's unavoidable. And it's quite a jolt to, to ride over that. And I thought perhaps it had something to do with, uh, the work being done on New Rand Road, but that work is finished. And this is actually in the middle of Garner Road, turning left from New Rand.
Okay.
I've tried many times to dodge it and I can't do it. So that's all.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Dallinger?
Um, just, there's a news release that came out from the town about Wake Med offering a back to school vaccine blitz on July 31st, eight to two, um, during the first shot Pfizer's. And Sunday, August 1st, five, two to five, and the second dose will be August 21st and then August 22nd. Um, school, I guess, is on track to go back. Uh, look, the last week when I was here, we were all here, hospitalizations statewide were around 600. Now they're over 1,000. Early Jan, early July, they were 400. So they're going up. So encourage everybody to get vaccinated and do what you got to do.
And I will just, uh, add my voice to that, Mr. Dallinger. Yeah, this, uh, there's a little statement here. Are you ready to have your tweens and teens vaccinated against COVID? A lot of debate and discussion about that, but I would encourage parents to take advantage of, uh, this opportunity and to give serious, uh, consideration to using a resource like this for sure. But thank you for bringing that to our attention. Uh, Mr. Vance?
Uh, just want to say that, uh, in driving on Highway 50 at the intersection of Highway 50 and Acton, Acton Road, there is a basketball goal that's within the right of way. It's been, just been laying there in the right of way. Probably need Public Works to come retrieve it and take it away.
Okay. Yeah. I think I've seen, yeah. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. And I will mention just a couple of things. Uh, I hope all of you know, maybe there hasn't been quite as much signage publicity, but the, uh, the annual Relay for Life, uh, event that this town is, uh, pretty well known for is going to take place this Saturday at, uh, Lake Benson Park. I believe, did I hear the time was from 10 to 10 that day? Phil, you're going to be there?
10 to 10 is what somebody said.
Okay. I encourage any of you to come out and, uh, be a part of that and, uh, to participate as you can. And then, um, also, um, the Stevens Committee, I don't think we've publicly announced this, uh, Rick's going to have something, uh, in the public, uh, arena by tomorrow. But, um, a former, uh, council member, Jackie Johns, was selected posthumously as the, uh, Stevens, uh, committee recipient. And, uh, we're anticipating, uh, to have a, um, a brief, um, what's the term I'm looking for?
Reception.
Reception. That's the term. And, and a, um, and recognition probably at the second meeting in August, maybe, I believe. I think that's the 17th. So that would be added on to the, to the front part of that. So keep that in mind also, if you will. Um, okay. I believe those are the only items that I had. So, um, anything else from council? We finished our agenda. So, uh, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. I tell you, I tell you what, just before we do that, uh, excuse me, I don't always do this, but, uh, we don't have so many people here tonight. I've noticed two young men that came in to be a part of our session tonight. Uh, would you, would you guys like to just stand up and tell us who you are or?
Sure.
Sure. Yeah. There you go. There you go.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. So much for having us tonight. Um, good evening, council members. Good evening, Mayor, for ten four. Good evening, Mayor. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you guys tonight. My name is Mick Tilgan. I'm a rising freshman at Duke University and, um, I've been living in the Raleigh area, uh, throughout the summer.
And my name is Sam Heiner and I'm a rising freshman at Chapel Hill. I've been living with Mick in the Raleigh area for this summer as well.
Okay.
And we're both very interested in local government and state politics. And that's one of the reasons why we're here to talk to you tonight is we've been working on a current issue that, uh, we'd like to share with you. And it's specifically the transport of, uh, dogs and truck beds and the safety of that. And, uh, to see if we can take some steps to reduce that safety risk. So start back on a little bit of backstory here. I was driving on the highway, uh, from Raleigh to, uh, Mooreville, North Carolina, two and a half hour drive. And on the highway, I noticed that, uh, you know, going 65, 70 miles per hour, there was a golden retriever standing in the back of a truck bed next to me. And, you know, no, uh, form of safety on the golden retriever and nothing stopping that golden retriever from either jumping out and, um, causing a traffic accident, which would risk the lives of, uh, dozens of drivers, but also, uh, injure or kill the animal. So it got me thinking, you know, this, is this even legal? Is this something that, you know, what, what can we do to, uh, you know, there's surely got to be something in place to, to make this practice, uh, you know, illegal, at least on a public road, on a highway especially. So I got a little, I did some research and I actually learned that the issue is, uh, not very isolated. It's much worse than I thought. And the American Humane Society actually estimates that, uh, roughly 100,000 dogs are injured or killed. I believe actually it's not even injured, it's actually killed from, uh, uh, you know, riding the back of truck beds and either falling out, jumping out, um, and causing accidents in that way. So I did more research as well and kept going, digging deeper on the internet and learned that there, uh, weren't really many restrictions in place for this practice. And there weren't any state laws restricting this in North Carolina. And there weren't many, um, ordinances as well in, in a lot of counties and, uh, towns, uh, animal chapters of the ordinance.
So seeing this, Mick and I decided to get together and, uh, push for change to this in North Carolina, seeing as it's, uh, an issue which affects so many dogs and also affects the safety of, uh, people in their cars in case a dog jumps out and can cause , uh, accidents. We wanted to do something about this. So we, uh, first looked at the state level, but just seeing that everything at the state level tends to be more partisan and there's, uh, no new bills can be introduced till 2023, till the new session. We wanted to be able to take action now on this important issue. So we decided to start the local level where a common sense reform like this can be made. And that's why we're here with you tonight to, uh, talk about this issue and get your thoughts on what could be done to change this. Our, uh, thought process on how we could fix this is amending the animal control ordinance to, uh, require dogs that are riding the back of truck, to say that dogs riding the truck, back of truck beds do not const, does not constitute a sufficiently secured dog and that the dog has to, uh, have some other form of being secured to be able to ride in the back of a truck bed. So I'd love to hear your thoughts about, uh, what you think could be done about this measure in Garner specifically.
Um, well, let me make a general, excuse me, observation, uh, at, at, at the time of adjournment. I'm not sure how much council would want to engage. And ordinarily, we have a time for petitions at our regular meeting where we hear from folks and we sometimes take that under advisement. But, uh, I commend you both for your desire to, to be involved. And, uh, that's, that's not a concern that we've heard specifically raised. Obviously there are dog issues in our town and other places as well. But, uh, council, I know we were just on the verge of adjourning. Anybody want to, uh, engage quickly with these young men? Or, um, uh, I'll be sensitive to the fact that, uh, we've heard their presentation and we can, uh, come back to this or if they want to come back to us and speak to us again. I want to
I'll say this, and I appreciate your, your, uh, your passion for what you're, you're working on. We're going to have to address our dog and animal ordinance because of the tragic situation that happened here where, uh, dogs killed a young, young girl and seriously injured the mother. So we're going to have to, we're in a court case. Now, it's not going to happen anytime soon, but we're going to have to readdress some of our ordinance. And that may be something we can, can look at at that time. Uh, because, uh, Ms. James can do some research and see what we can do. Uh, but, uh, you know, we're going to be doing that in the near future whenever this case settles and this may be a while in the court system. So I think when we look at that, that's something we, we may look at, just like we may look at banning exotic snakes. So, you know, have snakes getting loose. I mean, seriously, I mean, other towns are talking about doing it and we may have to look at that also. But you brought a topic to us up that, uh, you know, I remember when I grew up, I worked on a farm and you rode in the back of the pickup truck on the tailgate, which can't do that anymore. You're not supposed to do that anymore. I'll restate, I'll restate that. Uh, but that was common practice when I was growing up. Yeah. And so, uh, a lot of dogs are out there and they're not secured and it gets slammed on the brakes. A lot of dogs are trained to stay in the bed, but not on, they can't fall out if they can't help it. So it's a good point. And I think it's something we can take up in the future and at least discuss.
Okay. Yes. Anybody else?
I commend you gentlemen for bringing this issue up. Uh, it has to start somewhere and, and don't quit. Yeah. Uh, it'll be discouraging from time to time, but stay with it because it does need to be addressed. And it's not something that, um, comes to the forefront, you know, in the everyday business of the council or the town, but it's up to you to bring it to the forefront. So keep it up.
Okay. Anybody else?
Echo that. Um, keep, get your first one and then you'll say, this town did it? And you say, these towns did it? These towns did it? Why aren't you going to do it? Uh, I think based on what Mr. Singleton said, I think a logical step just for us, since we're going to be looking at ordinance is to have our town attorney look and see what we can legally do, um, about transport on roads. And I don't know, because some of the roads we don't operate, they're DOT roads. I don't know if that has any bearing, but our attorney would be able to give us guidance on flexibility we have, which would help you know, as you move forward, what potential obstacles or opportunities there are when you approach other towns. So thank you for covering.
Yeah. Anything else from council?
Yes, your passion is commendable. Uh, and the issue that you bring up is a real one. And I would say continue to follow what makes your blood boil. And that is this, this concern about the, the dogs and traveling in vehicles and continue to move forward with your endeavor.
Okay.
I'm glad to see a young man like yourself taking on something that you, you determined needed to have some attention brought to it. And, uh, it all starts at a local level. And, uh, as Mr. Singleton said, we're going to be looking at some things later on that's coming. So your timing was probably well spent. So good luck on your project.
If I might just give you a little personal admonition, perhaps you guys already covered, you heard us talk about the vaccine blitz. I think one of you are attending an institution that probably, if I'm reading my newspaper correctly, requires vaccination, but, uh, I'm certainly a strong advocate of, uh, vaccination, uh, particularly for younger people and older people as well. So, uh, I'd encourage you to, if that's something you haven't given attention to, to give some attention to that.
It's good to see Duke and Carolina working together.
There you go. Yeah. Pretty commendable.
Can anybody tell this gentleman that our manager is a Duke graduate?
Oh, really? I saw the ring. I didn't know. Sure, yeah.
Nine. I'm a Kirk Spurrier.
Yeah. But I, but I must mention there, yeah, yeah. I, I, I must mention there are some people on this day who bleed state red. So, uh, you know,
Well, that's true.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, we appreciate you being here and I hope your interest in these kinds of causes and local government remains. Um, it's a, it's a good way to, to get engaged with your community for sure.
We really appreciate all the advice and support. We'll definitely continue to pursue this and, uh, stay involved as those questions about, uh, animal regulations and, uh, the town of Garner begin to be considered. And actually, uh, in terms of other counties doing this or other municipalities doing this, uh, Rowan County passed a similar measure in the past. So there is some precedent here luckily. And, uh, we'll definitely hope to stay involved.
Very, very good. Yeah.
Passed something. That's good enough.
My wife is from Lake County, so I'll check that up the next time we visit with her family up there. But, uh, yeah, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And we're going to vote now to adjourn. Did we take the vote? Forgotten if we did or not, that we were on the verge. If you're in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Okay. It is so ordered. This meeting is, uh, is adjourned and our next meeting will be on Monday weekend, is it? Yeah.